I'm ready with that now. I'll beam it. That's what I'm drinking. My youngest is terrified of the mops and she won't let us open any windows.
Hello, but get in.
I know.
I don't understand it.
I know. I'm like, where's the hole in my...
I know.
And my cats, they just sit there and watch it. I'm like, kill it, kill it.
They should wipe up because you can't read these.
They've played with a couple of them. But I was there, it was like one in the... It was on the other side. And the cats are six...
I have 631.
Who are you? Really?
Welcome, everyone. For council, if you'll look at your sheet that has the green, if you would be so kind, as to if your name's on the right-hand side there, give a yes or no and peel this off and give it to Abby so that we know what's happening. We've had dinners recently where we have people signed up and we have spaces empty. If we know we're going to have that, we're going to invite other people to the tables. That's citizens', taxpayers' money, and we'd like to have full tables and things. And if you can't make things, if you've signed up and at the last minute, we understand people get sick or whatever happens, just reminder, protocols are you're to do Cody, Mark, and all of council Thursday and Saturday. I didn't see an email that councilors weren't going to be there, so it just makes life easier to do that all the time. So as people have to rearrange programs, it can be done as soon as they see that. So anyway, that's a new format. We're going to see if it works instead of them having to call us and check up on people. So it's okay to say no, but we just need to know. Let's go with, because I saw several questions come through for the agenda. Let's get through those before we get to reports. David, you had some?
I do. I wasn't prepared to hear you talk.
Mayor Protam does his... Just FYI, I'm going to ask for a minutes correction on the dais regarding comments. Mine had mentioned that I had agreed with RMMA in getting more information, which that's fine, but I really was referring to the voicemail that we heard and wanting more information on that, and that wasn't encapsulated here. So I'd love just a correction.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Okay.
So a couple of things I just wanted to clarify. So I appreciate the responses to my questions. And I would start by saying the spirit of my questions is to make sure that if people are found to have not, you know, if we took their car and we shouldn't have, that would be in fairdom. And so one of the things they don't understand is like if in your answers there's a part where if the city attorney's office decides that, you know, they want to drop it, then it's, and if I understand it right, that the person whose car got impounded would still have to go through a court process? So there's like another step that they'd have to apply for in order to not pay the fees for the towing and the impound? And my reason I ask that is it seems like if we're saying we decided we don't want to pursue this one from a city attorney's and we don't want to prosecute, to me, we're almost admitting that we decided that that's, you know, we shouldn't. So why would we, you know, make them jump through hoops in order to not be on the hook for the money?
So Mark Hoff is here, and Mr. Hoff can, I think, add to some details. My understanding, Mayor Protam, is that if there has been probable cause established to impound the vehicle, that's one event that has significance as far as who is going to pay for the impound. If there's no probable cause to impound, then I think the owner of the vehicle doesn't get the bill. It's only if there is probable cause to impound.
But, Mr. Hoff, could you help us with that?
Yes. So there are, there are three steps of probable cause in an impoundment, at least in the motor vehicle closure code. First, the police department makes a determination whether they believe they have probable cause, and that would start this process. And so after that, they would write a probable cause affidavit, and then they would send it to the city prosecutors. If the prosecutors determine not to proceed, it may be because they don't believe there's probable cause, in which case the prosecutors would not likely dispute a probable cause determination. So there would be no hearing. But it also may be that they just don't think it's equitable, but there was probable cause. And so the, under our impoundment code, it is the court's determination that determines whether the person has to pay for the impoundment and towing fees. And so at the moment when the city prosecutor is making their decision, the court has not weighed in on that issue. So this simply would allow for that hearing to take place if that was the decision of everybody involved. But it doesn't have to. It just simply would follow the procedures that are in place for all the other impoundments.
Okay. So, and that's where this is kind of strange and sticky. So I'm trying to make sure I understand this right, and maybe I don't. But just reading the answer that was provided to my email, so city attorney's office declines to pursue, you know, and it's closed, but the fees have probably, at that point, I'm assuming, have probably already been charged? Because then it goes on to say then there's a court thing to determine. So that's where I don't really understand. So it still has to, you've decided not to pursue charges, then there would still be a court hearing that the court could then change and say, no, we are going to pursue charges and find them?
So this is not, it's not a criminal charge. It's a civil abatement. And so it's, the city prosecutor would be, so the three steps, I should have said this to begin with. The three steps would be the police department makes a probable cause determination, then the prosecutors have to make a probable cause determination, and then the court would make its probable cause determination. Essentially, if the prosecutors, for equitable reasons, saying this doesn't seem fair to pursue this case, could stop it at that moment. And it would be up to the individuals involved whether or not they would dispute or have the court do a hearing on whether the probable cause existed.
So, okay, and I appreciate that clarification, and that's where I, it doesn't sound fair to me is, so if, so say that happens, and then they decide, hey, I don't want to pay these. Do they have to in order to not pay, then have a court hearing? Because if we have, at the moment where it goes to the city attorney's office, city attorney's office says, you know what, this doesn't pass our test. We don't think that this was fair and equitable, so we're not going to press charges. At that point in my mind, the logical thing would be then they wouldn't have to pay the fees. But it sounds like in your three-step process, if they wanted to fight the fees and not have to be responsible, they would have to still go to court even though the city attorney's office dropped charges.
So...
Or drop the case or whatever, however you want to look at it.
One of, one of the things to keep in mind is the city of Westminster does not have its own impound lot. It's, we use a contractor. And so we would have to get a court order or have the court say that the city is going to pay for that amount in order for that to happen. And so, yes, there would need to be a hearing in order for that process to take place, because the prosecutor's office in and of itself, the city attorney's office, cannot have, order the city to pay for the impound fees if that was going to happen.
And that clarifies my problem with this is because to me, you know, we're saying there's, you know, we shouldn't have done this from a city attorney office, so we're dropping it. But then we're making the folks who got their car impounded still pay. And I understand what you're saying, but to me, that's a check and balance. If, so for example, if I think through this in a civil matter, if I go and sue Councilor Seymour for something and then, and he wins, I have to pay his attorney's fees. And the reason that that's important is it keeps some balance so that we know, you know, we take it serious that if I'm going to go do that, I feel confident that I should do that. So if I think about that in terms of the city, that's an extra weight for our departments to say, we're going to use this tool. We really want to, you know, we really believe that this is the right thing to do. And there's a weight of the city's on the hook for having to pay those fees and impound because, does it make sense what I'm saying? Like, that's, I, that's my hangup with it, in general with that, because I just feel like, you know, if we're saying that it didn't go through the whole court process. So I don't know how that can be addressed. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but I just feel like that's not really equitable in my mind if we're not going to go through the whole thing and say, you know, yeah, this was appropriate for us to do.
It would be something that we would need to address with the court and the city prosecutors, because unfortunately, at the stage of the city attorney's office making a determination, we can deter, the city attorney's office could determine not to proceed with the matter, but the city attorney's office does not have the authority to order the city to pay for the impoundment. Does that make sense?
It does. So I guess my question is, is that fix, I mean, is that a policy issue? Or how could you address that concern?
And that's why I can have that discussion with Judge Lontine when he comes in to see whether or not there's some procedural procedure that the court could create in order to make it so that that would be an easier transition. And I understand what you're saying. All the, all impoundments have that go through the same code. And so that's simply would just be saying that the motor vehicle closure is no longer being pursued, and now this falls under a different code. And I understand your concern, and I can bring it up to the judge when he gets...
Yeah, if we, you know, like I said, I don't want to necessarily hang it up tonight for that, but I do want it addressed and see if we could come up with making sure we're, you know, going the extra distance to be equitable. Because, I mean, we're talking about something pretty serious. We're talking about taking somebody's property. And I mean, that's, is a hard thing for me in the first place, to be honest, but I understand why we're doing it, because we have a real concern with public safety with the cars. The other thing that I wanted to at least just mention, and I probably will bring it up in the meeting for folks who don't hear it, like I was just reading through some of your answers to Councilor Baker's questions. And so like, you know, again, not that I don't know, our officers know this, but, you know, this, the discretion that they have in order, say, somebody going around a corner and the street's wet in a truck. I have a truck. That happens sometimes. And sometimes, you know, you're trying to go fast and you peel out. So I understand that's not exactly what it's saying, but, I mean, these kind of tools could be abused. Not that I think our people would do that. But in, you know, just so that I'm comfortable that we're taking it very serious, I guess my request would be, could we get like a feedback in say, a year's time from it being implemented to say, here's how many times it was used, just in general, maybe some details around it that makes sense, as well as how many times that we decided to drop it, if, you know, and at what point? Because there's a couple of points where it could get dropped. So I think that that would, that accountability piece is really important, because this is a fairly new tool, even with our, you know, our neighboring municipalities that are doing something like this. I just think that having an extra set of eyes on it to make sure that it's really even being useful, it's, you know, being properly used in that the public knows that we're, you know, not taking this lightly, I would appreciate that. But aside that, I really appreciate all the answers. They were very thorough. I know I had, you know, kind of very specific questions, so I appreciate the quick response today.
Can I just have an add-on question to that? So when the, so if this occurs and somebody has to go to a hearing to get their fees, whatever, refunded or whatever, is that hearing in person or can it be virtual? I'm just kind of, you know, it's also taking away from their time at work, so.
That's, honestly, that is more of a question for the court. I know that they have, in the past, done virtual or telephonic hearings, and that is really the presiding judge's discretion as to how those court procedures take place.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I didn't see the answers to the questions, so I'll be asking them fresh.
Okay.
Okay. As I understand this, this is to impound nuisance vehicles from all sorts of reasons, correct?
There are a list of reasons, yes.
So like, an improperly parked car could be impounded?
Not under this code, no.
Okay. So what could be impounded under this code?
There are nine types of acts which could constitute a public nuisance under the code. One is vehicular eluding, so essentially eluding the police. Two is speeding more than 40 miles an hour over the posted speed limit or traveling more than 100 miles per hour on any city street. Three is engaging in a speed contest, which is essentially racing or doing some type of time trials. Four is engaging in a speed exhibition. There is a definition for that, and I, I'm happy to read it. It includes presenting a display of power, of speed or power, including squealing of tires on a, of a motor vehicle while it's stationary or in motion, rapid acceleration, rapid swerving or weaving in and out of traffic, producing smoke from the tire slippage, or leaving visible tire acceleration marks on the surface of the highway or ground. The fifth one would be reckless driving. Sixth would be obstructing a street or other passageway. Seven would be a minimum speed regulation violation. Eight would be assault battery or unlawful discharge of a firearm when a motor vehicle is used as a means of concealment or transportation. Essentially, that would be like a drive-by type of crime. And ninth would be two or more offenses of disturbing the peace, which is generally through excessive noise within 180 days of each other.
And then how would it work?
How would the process work?
Yeah.
So the first step would be that the, the police department would make a probable cause determination of whether or not there's probable cause to believe one of these acts took place and that the vehicle was involved, and that it happened within the city of Westminster. There's also a requirement that the city...
And that would occur when?
At the time the, either at the time the police department has made contact with the vehicle, or they would do it through a warrant application like they would for any other type of warrant that they would issue through the police department. And so I don't know the exact, I mean, that would be after they believe they've gathered enough to establish probable...
Why don't we take, okay, like, okay, like, eluding, okay? Obviously, they eluded.
They may have been caught at the end, but yes, they, they may have also eluded and not been caught.
Well, if they were caught at the end, it's a whole different thing, isn't it?
Not necessarily. They can still, if they're caught at the end, they can still be, they were still eluding the police, but they just unsuccessfully, at the end, eluded the police.
Okay. Why don't we take the one where they're not caught?
Okay. So the, the police department would determine whether they have probable cause.
And how would that be done?
Well, I think that's probably more of a question for Chief Hubbard than myself. That's through their investigative process. So, you know, they would gather the evidence that they have before them, and then they would, they would write up an affidavit for a warrant, and then submit it to the city prosecutor's office.
Okay. When would the car be impounded?
Under that circumstance, it would be once the, the police department or the city was able to identify where the vehicle was, and then they can impound it under the laws for impounding the vehicle. So once there is a warrant...
So in other words, so in other words, a tow cop, a really tow truck could show upside, outside of the home of a person in Brumfield and tow their car away?
No, the car would have to be inside the city of Westminster, because it would be a Westminster municipal judge that issued the order to impound the vehicle. And so probably what would occur is the police department would, would show up. They would call the towing company, and then the towing company would come and remove the vehicle.
Okay. And would there be any notice to the owner?
If they were around and we were able to give them notice, certainly we would give them notice.
No, beforehand.
I'm, as far as notice to the owner?
Right.
We would certainly make every effort to do that. That's included in the code.
When we have to do that?
They have to make effort.
Okay. Before the court hearing or after?
Before the court hearing. That's, that's part of the code that's in place now for other types of offenses, but the police department makes an effort to determine who the owner is and then sends them a notice.
Counselor, just for clarification, during the process, usually the judge, whether it be a municipal judge or a state judge, won't sign off on a warrant for a person or for a vehicle unless we have made attempts and can document those attempts of what we've done to try to get a hold of that owner.
Okay. So then would there be a time for that owner to show up in court when the whole impoundment thing is being issued?
They could. They could appear in court and ask to be added on to the docket and then be heard before the impoundment.
Well, I mean, we want to avoid the case that the Mayor Protam talked about. We want to make every effort to avoid that case.
In the...
Would this, would this provide that effort?
In, in the circumstances that you're describing, the police department, the city prosecutor's office, and the municipal judge have already made a probable cause determination. And so the judge has already determined there is probable cause for the case to proceed. And so that, the instance that the Mayor Protam was describing, that wasn't the case, that there hasn't been that probable cause determination at that moment. And so this is a different type of case where that determination's already gone through the process.
If we don't, if we don't catch the person that night, we're going to go through the court process and get a warrant for that vehicle. So in the, in the process of that...
I guess I don't, you know what you mean by warrant. I don't know what you mean by warrant.
Fair enough, Counselor. Sorry about that. So, so we, what, if, if the person escapes our custody that night and the vehicle escapes us, so we would attempt to contact the registered owner through any means that we can do, be it mail, be it phone, be it previous contacts, anything that we can do to reach out to that registered owner, assuming that the registered owner was the one driving. They may or may not have been the one driving that night. From there, we're making those, attempting to make those contacts. At the same time, we are also filing paperwork through the city prosecutors and through the city judge, saying, hey, we believe we have probable cause to believe this vehicle, driven by this person or not this person, eluded us that night. And then they would then issue a warrant for us to go out and tow that vehicle. So the, the due process, if you will, to the judge has already occurred if we're going out that night and towing that vehicle.
Except that, except that the person who owns the vehicle never got a chance in the legal process to respond to the charges, to the, well, to the allegations made against his vehicle or her vehicle.
And that is what the, the trial, the court process is for, is it results in a trial on the merits where there can be a adversarial hearing, and the court can make the determination as they would with any other type of case.
But then we have deprived the person of their property. And I am absolutely against depriving a person of their property until they've been found guilty in a court of law.
Counselor, that's, that's no different than it is in their court today. If, if your vehicle is using the commission of selling drugs, and we have that information, we don't allow, you don't have that opportunity to come in and to dispute that. We apply for the warrant, go out and tow the vehicle, and then you show up to court to dispute that with those criminal charges or the civil charges of towing that vehicle.
I, I guess I didn't know that. I think that's wrong, too.
And to Mayor Protam's point, what generally speaking happens, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hoff, the closest thing I can, I can give to an example to your case is prior to code enforcement being the ones doing parking, if we went out to a fire, a fire hazard, and we ended up impounding that vehicle. There's two processes there. One for the summons for the fire hazard, and two, the civil piece of towing that vehicle. The city prosecutors may say, we're not doing anything with that ticket. We think that ticket's unreasonable. We still, that, that person still has to go in front of the judge to say, I think the towing piece of that was wrong. There's two avenues there. One is the criminal, one is the civil. And so if the judge then says, yeah, you guys were out of bounds, then that comes out of our budget. We pay all those impound fees for that person, the towing fee, all the way to the impound fee. So the person, yes, is out the time coming into court, but they're not out any money as it relates to that process, if that helps.
It, it does. I, I guess I don't see them as really necessarily the same thing, just because it's a, we're using that tool specifically for the vehicle. But, I mean, I totally get what, what you're saying, and I don't see like the, necessarily the property is different. Just like, I'm sure if somebody was selling drugs out of their business and we closed him down, they probably wouldn't have access to that business till there was some court process. Or even in our business licenses, I know that we've taken business licenses and they have to go through a process if they want to fight that. So I just don't want us to, I guess, be causing things and then deciding, no, we, we were wrong, and then the people being out of it specifically when it was all the same thing. But understandable. And I will tell you the other thing, there is a particular instance that came to mind when I was thinking through that, and I don't, I think it was before I was even on council, where there was a car that was stolen, ended up in a shooting with the PD, and the owners ended up, and I don't know what the specifics around it were, but what I had heard about it was they ended up having to pay the fees for the towing, or at least they were being held responsible. And I mean, so I, I would like to avoid situations like that. And I understand it's not always the case, just because sometimes justice and due process are messy, but, you know, just so, you know, in light of, you know, what I would like to avoid.
And Mayor Protam, the last piece that I'll follow up with on is, is in relate, in regards to your question about tracking this. We will absolutely track this. And I posed that question to the traffic officers today. Out of all the summons and all these speed contests and all that stuff that they dealt with last year, they believe that a total, if they could go back and do it, and if this was ineffective, there would be eight cases that they would have used this in last year. So this isn't going to be a deal where two kids are taken off from the high school, drag race, and lunch. I understand that's a concern. It's, it's a fair concern. But we absolutely understand that this is a tool for us, for the street racers, and that's, and that's the intent of this, and that's what we're going to use it for. We will absolutely track that and report that back.
I appreciate it.
It is almost time, so I guess the rest of the questions are in front of the meeting. So we're adjourned to go in. So, we're adjourned to go in.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of May 22, 2023. We have lots of students with us. Anybody that would love to come up front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I welcome you to come up forward. And the rest of us, stand.
Okay, there's a flag back there. Put your hands over your hearts and get us started.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your help. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nermilla.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting for May 22. We thank you and welcome you for coming tonight. And would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. We want to assure be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an exception expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting, that the threats and intimidation are prohibited, signs and place cards are prohibited in council chambers, and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Have a motion for minutes, Counselor Emmons?
Since you had the
Do I do it now or?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to have an amendment on the minutes for May 8.
Do you want to share what it is?
Uh, I don't know if anyone wants to second. Uh, yes, to more accurately reflect my council comments in the minutes, it says that I had asked for more information about our MMA, which could be true, but I also was specifically referencing the voicemail during public comment, referring to the fireworks that they had called in about. So, that I would like the minutes to more accurately reflect what I had asked.
Counselor Seymour.
And I move to approve the minutes as amended of the May 8, 2023 meeting.
Counselor Emmons, one second.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and amended to approve the minutes with the correction that was stated. Are there any other corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And would the citywide safety team join me down front?
It's not the whole team, but a couple representatives, few representatives.
Well, good.
I'll give you the microphone and tell us who you are and what you all do on your committee.
Perfect. My name is Marty Erickson. I'm a human resources manager and the risk manager and help supervise our safety committee. You want me to just introduce you guys or you want to?
Please.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Jackie Bonavita is our HR administrator in charge of safety. So she supervises our safety program. And then Jackie Bowers, so we get the double Jackie Bs here, which is dangerous. Jackie Bowers actually is the safety rep for four of our departments, city managers' office, city attorneys' office, economic development, and the IT. So she's most of the program right here. And then Jeremy is our safety, citywide safety rep for the fire department. And there are several there are safety reps for every department we have, but unfortunately, these are the only ones who could attend tonight.
And tell us what kinds of things you do.
The safety committee meets once a week and two things, I'm sorry, once a month. Oh, gosh. Sorry, it's Monday. We meet once a month. And two of the things the safety committee does every month is we review all of the injuries that occurred to our employees on the job and then on any auto accidents that the employees were involved in, whether they were at fault or not. And really, it's just kind of brainstorming with the safety reps from each department to figure out what happened and why did it happen? And most importantly, how can we prevent it from happening again in the future? So, having better safety systems in place.
Well, thank you very much. And safety is so important, and thank you for taking it so seriously. I have a proclamation for you all. Whereas National Safety Council NC at NSC sponsors National Safety Month each June to focus on saving lives and preventing injuries from the workplace to any place. And whereas the city of Westminster emphasizes employee safety in the workplace and at home by providing job-specific safety training. And whereas the city has been providing behavior-based safety training, Safe Start, for benefited employees since 2014 to enhance awareness at work, at home, and while driving. And whereas the city has created a citywide safety team comprised of employees representing all departments that meet monthly to review on-the-job injuries and accidents and track trends and safety needs of the organization. And whereas the city has implemented implemented unique safety-related programs, including a quarterly safety spirit award and annual safety VIP award that financially rewards divisions by helping to fund their safety-related ideas and efforts. And whereas the city promotes the idea of safety always for its workforce. And whereas the safety of our employees is vital to our future as a city and the public we serve. Now, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 City of Westminster National Safety Month and urge my fellow citizens to recognize the efforts of employees in the city of Westminster for helping foster a safe environment for themselves and the public who enjoy the many activities and programs, both indoors and outdoors, that the city provides. Signed this 22nd day of May 2023.
Thank you.
Do you need a picture, Mr. Paparazzi? Counselor Emmons.
Could I have Jeremy Hill join me up front? Well, in my line of work, I work with nationwide EMS partners, and I know the inherent value that they provide to our communities. So, thank you. Thank you, our Westminster EMS teams. Jeremy, I'm gonna let you give a little bit about yourself and what you do for Westminster.
My name is Jeremy Hill. Good evening. I'm the EMS chief for the fire department here at the city of Westminster. I also have some of our EMS providers in the back there. Our EMS division is kind of a driving force for the fire department. For those who aren't aware, emergency medical services calls account for roughly 70% of the call volume that we respond to every year. So, it's a huge part of our business. I'm very proud to serve alongside the people that we do because I believe that the city of Westminster has the strongest EMS provider group in the state of Colorado. And that's been proven by our data and and some of the just kind of commentary that we get back from the citizens that we serve. So, very excited to be here. I think we'll talk a little bit more about National EMS Week, but yeah.
And with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas American support for the Second Amendment Whereas emergency medical services are vital to every community, and whereas City of Westminster Fire Department, emergency medical technicians and paramedics are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas in 2022, the City of Westminster Fire Department responded to 10,815 calls for emergency medical services. And whereas access to emergency medical care drastically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas emergency medical services providers dedicate thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized Emergency Medical Services Week to celebrate emergency medical practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. And whereas the theme for the 49th Annual National Emergency Medical Services Week in 2023 is EMS, where emergency care begins. And now, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through the 27th as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Westminster and call upon the people of Westminster to recognize and support the activities and efforts of the city of Westminster Fire Department's emergency medical services providers. Signed this 22nd day of May 2023.
Next is Counselor Azadi.
Good evening, everyone. Is Kathy Kelly here? Want to come up? So, I'm here to present the proclamation. You can come up here. For Gun Death Awareness Day. And just wanted to say a few words on this matter. It's really important to thousands of folks in the city. And so here in Westminster, we have thousands of people who care about this issue. And we have a lot of folks who are veterans, right? So, I like to seek their counsel on topics like this because a topic like this is very politicized, right? And they tell me things like, Obi, why why are we ripping ourselves apart as a society on the issue that we actually mostly agree on? You know, and that's what's happening, right? We have politicians, we have the media, we have lobbyists, we have folks who are trying to make this appear as a more divided issue than it actually is. I I think that there are lots of topics in politics that we all can unite around, that we actually agree on, you know? And looking at the stats, just wanted to say a few of them here. 87% of gun owners believe that there is a way to reduce gun-related violence while still respecting gun rights. 86% of gun owners support background checks. 76% of gun owners support requiring safe storage. So, these are just examples of areas where we all actually agree. And I think a proclamation like this, though it's just a proclamation, is a meaningful step that we should be more aware of what's happening. And in in Westminster, by the way, in 2022, we had two homicides last year by that by 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 guns and 13 suicides. So, it's just a recognition that there is an issue and that we can unite around this and see what's happening. But Kathy, do you want to introduce yourself and what you do?
Sure. I'm Kathy Kelly, one of the many volunteers who work around the state for gun violence prevention. There are more than 10,000 of us here locally, supporting anti-gun violence and gun safety, recommending things like gun locks, gun safes, and safe storage. You'll also see us at the Capitol trying to legislate for safer gun gun reform measures to keep our kids safe in particular and make sure that they don't have guns in the hands of small children who shouldn't have it. So, we appreciate the city of Westminster recognizing this event and and declaring a proclamation in favor of gun safety.
Okay, I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas American support for the Second Amendment right to bear arms to protect life and property and protect itself and family goes hand in hand with recognizing the inherent responsibility that guns require. And whereas in 2020, there was more than a there was more than 5,000 deaths death increase in the number of homicides. And whereas the majority of gun-related deaths are suicides of gun owners and is not part of the typical public discussion. And whereas to stem suicide deaths, American society must insist that there is only loss in suicide and that our community rejects any hint of shame and stands ready to help anyone contemplating suicide. And whereas prevention of gun-related death must continue as a high priority effort, especially in light of increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines and an increase in city gun violence. January 13 Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize the birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will remember her and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun deaths and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday in June, to help raise awareness about gun-related deaths, Americans will raise awareness about gun deaths and so can begin a path to fewer suicides and victims of criminal acts. Now, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim June 2, 2023 as National Prevention of Gun-Related Death Awareness Day and encourage the public to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic the tragic consequences of gun deaths and to honor and value human lives. Signed, 3rd of May 2023.
Next is public comment. This is a portion of the meeting that you have an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any given topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. This evening, there are no public hearings, so you may speak to us on whatever agenda item you want to speak to us on or anything else. This evening, the city clerk, how many we have received one email. And how many in-person and voicemails do we have?
We have nine people signed up to speak, and then we have zero voicemails.
Okay.
The first speaker is Alma Carrillo.
Welcome, Alma. Glad to see you.
Good to see you. Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Alma Carrillo. I'm from Representative Brittany Patterson's office. I am just here to let everybody know that if you are having any issues with the federal agency, so passports is a big one, IRS, Veterans Affairs, Medicare, anything like that, please give us a call. Our number's 303-274-7944. And if you have any any comments, questions about federal legislation or federal grants, we're also open for that. So, happy to talk with anybody and give us a call. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And the only thing I wanted to be sure you were aware of to tell our Congresswoman is June 10, we are on further ribbon cutting. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Colin Richard. Welcome.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of renaming Trenwood Park.
Would you put the microphone up there? Thanks.
Is this better? Okay, sorry. I moved to Colorado. I moved to Colorado from Vermont when I was in third grade, and Joe Tavakhorst was my teacher. So I move out here, I have almost no family, absolutely no friends, and he was the best step towards getting me into Colorado's community and feeling like I belonged here. Within a month, I had felt like no time had passed, I had friends, and it was honestly all thanks to him. And in the years that passed, I slowly became closer with him and his family because he never really stopped being a teacher for me. I might have graduated from his third-grade class, but he still had a lot to teach me in life, which is what he proved. I consider him more of an uncle now than as a past teacher. And I think if renaming the park helps his memory live on beyond any of us, I think out of everyone I've ever known in life, he deserves that memory to live on the most. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matthew Flowers. Welcome.
Hey, I'm Matt, and I'm also speaking on the Trenwood re-park renaming issue. So I had Joe as a teacher in third grade a long time ago, but I remember so much about it because Mr. T., as I call him, as I have most people call him, he really made everyone want to learn more. Like, he would always do so many fun things to make everyone stay engaged. And he was pretty strict on you at the same time. He would make sure everybody was willing to learn and... That's a little scary up here. But I think renaming the park would be great for his memory because if, I'm sure education's important to all you guys, and Mr. T., for me and so many other people in here that also had him as a teacher, he really helped to prioritize education and unimpressible young kids. He was great at steering everybody on the right path towards a better future. So, thank you.
The next speaker is Brian Bennefield. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Brian Bennefield, this is Mandy Chappie. We're coworkers of Joe's at Betty Adams Elementary, and just wanted to share a few things that he did. Matthew and Colin have done a great job of already expanding on their part as a student, but as coworkers, Joe was amazing for helping us whenever there was something that was needed. He jumped into everything, and he was in everything he did. More members have joined us. He was part of the spelling bee, helping the kids to learn how to spell, did after-school math clubs to help the students who may be struggling with math or just wanted a little extra help with math, but Joe was always there to help them. He also did the fun things, like getting taped to the flagpole, you know, as an incentive for our kids to, you know, raise money for our school. But one of the things that reminds me the most, because I'm the PE teacher, is we do a yearly field day in the Trenwood Park, and he loved to run the 50-yard dash against his kids. He did it as a way to, a little bit show off, to say, hey, I still got it. But he also did it as a way to, you know, build relationships with those kids. They loved him to death, everybody looked up to him and couldn't wait to be in his class that year. And we, he started a yearly kickball also that's in that same park that we all look forward to, which we will be playing here shortly to remember him. And he again had a chance to show off his skills. I can remember him in the beginning in the warmups, just booming them off into the outfield just to show the kids, hey, look where I'm going with this, be ready for it. He was an amazing teacher, one of the best ones we've had in Adams. And we're just appreciative of you guys to thinking over renaming that park in his memory. Thank you.
The next speaker is Earl Tavakhorst. I apologize. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Earl Tavakhorst. I was... Sorry, Joe's father. They asked me to do this, but it's pretty rough.
Do you want somebody to read it for you?
No.
Okay. Somebody's coming to...
It's my wife.
If I get some...
Anyway, I was Adams County School District 50, now the public schools, Westminster Public Schools teachers for 32 years of the 45 years I taught. And I was the original Mr. T. And we have lived, well, actually, yeah, pity the fool, right? We have lived in Westminster for over 43 years, and all three of our childrens went to school here. Besides his college years, Joe lived in Westminster and he raised his family here, too. As a youngster, like most kids, he didn't want to be a teacher like me, you know? But the jobs he took before graduating from college showed his tendency of wanting to work with kids. He was a lifeguard at the City of Westminster pool, outside pool, and he worked also many, many years as a summer counselor for the summer program up here in City Park with kids. But Joe simply was a person who loved people. He loved being a teacher and a coach. And as a teacher, just like I just said, he really focused on building a relationship with all of the students. And this relationship went beyond just the school day. He would go to student sports games and go to their dance performances. He would even take quite a few birthday parties, graduation parties, and he would always go to the Stanley Lake graduations. Joe loved these activities and was thrived on the interactions he had with others and people. Joe carried the same love of children to his coaching. Now, when I go to the City Park to watch my grandson play soccer, the coordinator always comes up to me and says, how are you doing? How are the kids doing? And says, Joe, just what a great guy Joe was. The team that he coached, he still had, they all look at together and they wear this shirt in remembrance of him. I want to thank you for considering renaming the park. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Tavakhorst. Oh, sorry, Tavakhorst.
Mr. T. was the name for a reason.
Welcome.
I do want to thank everyone as well for taking your time to hear our discussion today and some of our takes on Mr. T. and my brother Joe. Did a little research and I looked up City of Westminster's parking rec mission statement, and it tells us that together we create exceptional opportunities for a vibrant community with commitment to nature, wellness, and literacy. And this mission is one that Joe was able to lead excellently. One that sticks out to me is vibrant. Joe's big personality could fill up a room and boom through any park, just like his kickballs. When coaching numerous teams for Westminster Parks and Rec, he provided leadership and guidance to his young members. Lessons of hard work, competitiveness, and fun were always part of the game. His slogan, "Just Have Fun," was woven in with the dose of discipline that provided a well-balanced environment that led into many wins and valuable developments of young personalities. Another one that stuck out to me is nature and wellness. In a day and age of tablets and TVs that young individuals are stuck behind, Joe provided a fun outlet for his team members, to be a challenged but athletic and outdoorsy way. He was great at sharing with me all his creative ways. He kept his teams engaged and moving so not to lose their attention. Another one's literacy. Now, as a fifth-grade teacher, of course, that comes into play. This was his daily bread in the classroom. Even at a young age, our parents taught us, and our grandparents as well, the never-ending, excuse me, never-ending way in keeping with our schoolwork and proper grammar. I know Joe's drive to grow his knowledge was transferred onto those around him. Proper use of placement of me and I, which we all know is very important, are things I remember hearing him coach not only in his classrooms, but also have found his way into swim lessons with the many young individuals he helped. Joe is very proud to live here in Westminster and would often sing the praises of the area where he grew up and chose to raise his family. He even took it a step further and named his dog Westy in Ota's favorite city in Colorado. I can't think of a more appropriate person for his name in a park where families and friends enjoy the outdoors and participate in sports. It would also mean so much to his family and this community here who dearly miss him. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Parker Brown.
I expected you with pom poms.
Right? Well, I was going to tell you that, you know, we voted in favor of this, I'll catch every one of them.
I'll give you five points for every one.
But this bribery is not allowed. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilors. My name is Parker Brown, as most of you already know. And I want to thank you for allowing us to come before you. Today, I stand before you to propose a change that is not just a simple adjustment of a name, but a heartfelt tribute to a dear friend, an extraordinary individual who has touched the lives of so many, including myself and my family. Joe was a personal friend, a co-coach soccer coach, and a former teacher to both of my kids, Cassidy and Logan. It is an honor to speak to y'all about the transformation of Trenwood Park into Joe Tavakhorst Park. In remembrance of an exceptional teacher at Betty Adams Elementary, a dedicated soccer enthusiast to whom I had the privilege of coaching with, still not sure how he put up with me and my kid, and a cherished leader in our community. Joe Tavakhorst is more than just a teacher and coach. He was a guide in light, an inspiration, and a mentor to many in this community throughout his career. His passion for education was evident in his commitment to instilling knowledge, encouraging creativity, and fostering a love for learning within his students. His impact went beyond the classroom, leaving an indelible mark on the lives of those he But Joe's contributions extended far beyond the classroom. Many of us had the privilege of knowing Joe on the soccer field, where he showcased his exceptional skills as a coach and his unwavering dedication to this sport. Together, we shared the joys of victory and the lessons of defeat. Joe taught us the importance of teamwork, perseverance, and the pursuit of excellence. His coaching went beyond the technical aspects of the game. He instilled in his team a spirit of camaraderie, a discipline, and a fierce determination to go get the ball. Joe Tavakhorst's impact on our community, I just lost my spot, but Joe's... That's what you get for writing it on a phone. But Joe taught... But he was a true leader and always at the forefront of initiatives that sought to make us a community of a better place. His enthusiasm and unwavering commitment were affectionate, rallying others to join him in endeavors that brought positive change. Joe's voice could often be heard resounding through the community, a rallying cry for action, for progress, and for making a difference. By renaming Trenwood Park to Joe Tavakhorst Park, we would not only honor the memory of a dear friend, but also the qualities he embodied and the values he instilled in us all. This renaming serves as a testament to the immense impact he had on the lives of students, athletes, and community members alike. It is a fitting tribute to a man who dedicated his life to the betterment of others. I urge each and every one of you to support this change, to embrace the legacy of Joe and to carry forward his spirit of leadership, passion, and dedication. Let us transform Trenwood Park into a living tribute, a place where future generations can gather, play, and learn, perpetuating... perpetuating the values Joe held dear. It wouldn't be right if I didn't mention that he is also a beloved father to three wonderful kids, Troy, Kayla, and Carter. Also, he left behind his wonderful wife, Melissa. He was a father who I personally looked up to and took advice from quite often. But in conclusion, because I'm sure you're all tired of hearing me talk, renaming Trenwood Park to Joe Tavakhorst Park is not just a symbolic gesture, it is an opportunity for our community to come together, to honor a beloved teacher, coach, and leader. And to ensure that his legacy endures for generations to come, let us celebrate Joe's remarkable life, his unwavering commitment to education and athletics, and his relentless spirit to take care of everyone. Together, let's create a place that encompasses the essence of Joe Tavakhorst and serves as a beacon of inspiration and unity for all who visit. I love you, Joe. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kylie Ship. Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Kylie, this is Michael, and we are Friends of Joe. I'd like to read you a quote. Cheerfulness is the great lubricant of the wheels of life. It lightens labor, diminishes difficulties, and mitigates misfortunes. Cheerfulness gives a creative power which the pessimists never possesses. A sunny, hopeful, optimistic disposition sweetens life, lightens inevitable drudgery, and eases the jolt along the road. Please let us carry on Joe's legacy and his joyful spirit with a park dedicated in his honor. Thank you.
And the final speaker I have signed up is Tom Lampeau. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. You've got a lot of Mr. T. pressure, and I hope you make the correct decision. So I'm here to pray for the City of Westminster. I was reading 2 Samuel 22, and it came to me that the chapter was very appropriate for the times we are in. 2 Samuel 22:1 states, "And David spoke to the Lord the words of this song on the day when the Lord delivered him from the hand of all his enemies, from the hand of Saul. The Lord will deliver us from the hands of all our enemies." We're in a spiritual battle that's manifesting itself in the physical. The prayer selects verses in 2 Samuel 22. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, the only living God, in Jesus's name, I pray that you look upon us not as the sinners we are, but as the forgiven children through the sacrifice of Jesus. I claim your victory, the victory you've already won for the City of Westminster. The Lord is my rock and my fortress and my deliverer, my God, my rock, in whom I take refuge, my shield, and the horn of my salvation, my stronghold and my refuge, my Savior. You saved me from violence. I call upon the Lord, who is worthy to be praised, and I am saved from my enemies. For the waves of death encompassed me, the torrents of destruction assailed me, the cords of shoal entangled me, the snares of death confronted me. In my distress, I called upon the Lord; to my God I called. From his temple he heard my voice, and my cry came to his ear. He sent from on high; he took me; he drew me out of many waters. He rescued me from my strong enemy, from those who hated me, for they were too mighty for me. They confronted me in the day of my calamity, but the Lord was my support. He brought me out in a broad place; he rescued me, because he delighted in me. With the merciful, you show yourself merciful; with the blameless man, you show yourself blameless; with the purified, you deal purely; and with the crooked, you make yourself seem torturous. You save a humble people, but your eyes are on the haughty to bring them down. For you are my lamp, O Lord, and my God lightens my darkness. For by you I can run against a troop, and by my God I can leap over a wall. This God, his way is perfect; the word of the Lord proves true. He is a shield for all those who take refuge in him. For who is God but the Lord, and who is a rock except our God? This God is my strong refuge, and has made my way blameless. He made my feet like the feet of a deer and set me secure on the heights. He trains my hands for war so that my arms can bend a bow of bronze. You have given me the shield of your salvation, and your gentleness made me great. You gave a wide place for my steps under me, and my feet did not slip. The Lord lives, and blessed be my rock, and exalted be my God, the rock of my salvation, the God who gave me vengeance and brought down people under me, who brought me out from my enemies. You exalted me above those who rose against me. You delivered me from the men of violence. For this I will praise you, O Lord, among the nations, and sing praise to your name. Great salvation he brings to his king and shows steadfast love to his anointed, to David and his offspring forever. I declare and decree this over all the people of the City of Westminster in Jesus Christ's precious and holy name. Amen. And I encourage all of Westminster to view current events through a biblical worldview. Thank you, guys, and have a nice night.
Thank you. Is there anyone that didn't have a chance to sign up?
Is there anyone that didn't have a chance to sign up that wanted to speak? See, no one. That brings us to City Managers Report, but before I do that, looking at the agenda, I am going, just so you get a heads up, I'm going to ask that we go to 10D first when we finish and get to item 10, and then we'll move through the agenda, because I know we have questions and debates, and these folks don't need to sit through all that, so. If they want to, they're welcome, but at least they'll know the decision one way or the other. So, uh, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen, and attendants, anybody watching online, some quick updates for everybody. So, next slide. So, first of all, the future of Sheridan Green Elementary School. Just to refresh everybody's memory, that is one of the schools that Jefferson County Public Schools will be closing here in the near future, based upon an original reverter clause. When that school is not used by the school district for a school purpose, it returns to the control of the city because the city is the original landowner for that property. And so with that, that property is going to come back into the control of the city. And the question for the council to kind of wrap its arms around, and certainly the community to wrap its arms around, is how do we want to reuse that facility? And so, we're going to hold our very, very first public feedback session, if you will, and we're going to sweeten the deal with a little bit of ice cream. So, please come out and enjoy some ice cream at Sheridan Green Elementary School. That will be on June 7th. We're going to do that from 5:00 to 7:30 PM in the evening, and it's hosted by Jefferson County Public Schools, who still owns the property, CRL and Associates, who are working with Jeffco Schools to disperse of these properties, and then certainly city staff. But we invite you to Sheridan Green Elementary School, June 7th, 5 o'clock to 7:30. What we're going to do is tell you what we know about the property and kind of the left and right parameters for the reuse, which would be based upon its zoning as it's currently zoned. And then what we want people to do is take a tour through the facility, kind of get some ideas, and then come back and provide us with, you know, their ideas. And we've already started receiving a lot of great ideas from the community about potential reuses. And our intent is, is to take that feedback, you know, essentially figure out whether it meets the current zoning, and then come back later this summer with some cost estimates and maybe some concept sketches, kind of throw that out to the community with reuse, and then have the community, if you will, with those little green stickies, kind of walk around the displays and tell us, these are things that you like and you think are appropriate reuses, and those that you don't. But again, the message from the city is, is we want the community's feedback. We need the community's feedback, and you certainly have a voice in the future disposition. Obviously, the council has the ultimate decision in how it's reused. But that's going to start out on June 7th, and so if you want to get more information, you can go to our city website slash Sheridan Green. The next thing I would mention is the Sheridan Boulevard Underpass Project. If you noticed over the weekend, they got some asphalt out on that stretch of road, improving. There's still some areas to fill in. But that project is wrapping up, and so there'll actually be a ribbon cutting scheduled for June 10th. The mayor just mentioned that a few minutes ago. And so, we're wrapping up a big project and something this community's been waiting on, and so I wanted to make sure everybody knows about that. Next slide. Some Westy wins. So, the city of Westminster received $40,000 grant for turf replacement. And so that's a great news story for us. The state legislator passed House Bill 1151 back in June of 2022, which allows the State Water Conservation Board to develop a turf replacement program and provide incentives for replacing non-essential irrigated turf with more water-wise landscaping. So, we've got the $40,000 that's going to come in over two years. And we intend to use the first year to expand current single-family lawn replacement program, and then the second year to pilot new large-scale landscape turf removal for homeowners associations, business parks, and other groups. So, that's a step in the right direction. $40,000 will go relatively quickly, but it's a good step in the right direction. Next thing, this past Thursday, I hope everybody was able to tune in or to attend the City Council Town Hall at Orchard Park. It was the first town hall of the season. We've got several other engagement opportunities lined up for the council in the coming year. But it was held out at Orchard Park, and, you know, we had Spanish language interpretation. So, if folks, you know, are perhaps uncomfortable without that assistance, it was available, and so it was nice to have that there. Folks were able to watch it online. It's recorded. And so, if you want to go back and check it out, please do, but 55 members of our community attended in person. And so, it was nicely done, well coordinated, and we appreciate the council's participation and engagement with the community. And the way that the format was, is there were opportunities to submit questions ahead of time. There were opportunities to write questions at the beginning of the event. And then there was also a mic that was passed around for people to provide comments. So, a great opportunity to engage the city council. Next slide. Some things to know. Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, here at City Council Chambers. Neighborhood Nights, that's a community recreation engagement opportunity, family fun, if you will. But it's Friday, May 26th, 6:30 to 8:30 PM at College Hill Library. Just to note, Monday is Memorial Day, a day when we observe Memorial Day for the nation and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our nation. There will not be a council meeting that day and/or a study session. And just of note, city administrative offices will be closed. Environmental Advisory Board meeting, Wednesday, May 31st, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, in the CMO conference room upstairs. Historic Landmark Board meeting, Wednesday, May 31st, 7:00 to 8:30 PM, City Hall Council Chambers. Summer Block Party, Friday, June 2nd, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. That's in Historic Westminster at 73rd and Bradburn Boulevard. And our next opportunity to engage the council outside of email or personal or phone contacts, you can certainly come to the City Council Study Session on June 5th at 6:30 here in Council Chambers. Next slide. And so, as always, I'll just remind everybody, the city staff certainly wants to be accessible, responsive, transparent, accountable. If you want to get in touch with us, please do. Lots of ways to do that. If you want to call me directly, you can do that at 303-658-2006, or email me. That's my email address. I will respond. There are people here in the audience that would attest to that. You can follow us on Twitter. You can like us on Facebook. Check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Nextdoor. If any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions for City Manager? Thanks. That brings us to City Council comments. Council Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a couple observations on the city hall we had, or town hall we had. We repeatedly asked for feedback. I think we got a lot of feedback at the town hall. It's, what are we going to do with that feedback? Are we going to take it to heart, or are we going to just say, "Thank you so much"? I think some of it, we should take to heart. And then I can't help but express some sadness over the gun debate that's going on. This council has spent quite a lot of time trying to move forward. And one of the things that I was quite pleased with in our proclamation is we recognize suicide as the leading cause of gun death. The leading cause. And it's never heard in public. It's never mourned in public. It's never talked about in public. And it's shocking when we lost 13 Westminster residents to suicide last year. That doesn't minimize the two we lost to murder, mind you. But 13 of our fellow citizens who were struggling with demons. And where was the support for them? And until we recognize the losses we have to suicide, we're not going to do anything about gun deaths. And there's no legislative cure for suicides. A waiting time wouldn't have helped. A restriction on the type of guns wouldn't have helped. So, if we're going to be serious about it, we need to engage. And it was sad when I saw some of the advocates for violent gun deaths leave, okay, the discussion this evening. We can do a better job if we really want to. Thank you.
Council Emmens?
Thank you. I just wanted to, after attending the Armed Forces Day on Saturday, just wanted to send a shout out to Leah and the events team. It was very well done. I think it was the most attended that I've seen it in recent years. Weather helped, I think. Last year it was very, very cold. But just wanted to shout out to Leah for taking that on. It was very well done. And just wanted to thank everyone who have served to date.
Council Sadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone here who came for Mr. T, I think, might just, you know, I've lost friends to cancer, and I'm struggling not to cry right now. But thank you for, thank you so much for advocating for someone that you cared about, someone that you loved, someone that was more than just a coach. He was more than a teacher. He was more than a union rep. He was more than a lot of things because, I mean, look what he did tonight, right? All of you are connected to him in some way, and you came out here on a Monday night just to give your thanks to him. And so, I thank you, and just know that this park that will be renamed in his honor, the benches, the trees, the smiles, right, that's going to be part of this park. That's going to, that's how he will live on. And just, if that helps at all, yeah, let me sob before I cry, but thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. One, the Veteran Day Memorial Service for Armed Services Day was great. Great speech by City Manager Freitag. Very much always enjoy that event and being able to honor our veterans. But the history that you gave, I learned some stuff. So, it's always nice when we learn some stuff about our armed services. So, that was a great event. The town hall, I have to thank everybody who participated. I think it was a great event. We certainly did get a lot of feedback. And I've done a lot of reflection on it. You know, there's a lot of anger in the world in general, but certainly in our communities. And there's so much outside of our control, you know, and people lash out. And I think that in general, what most of the council tries to do is control the things that's within side our control. Anybody who's managed people, one of my tactics with young people, say specifically if you have like a business that is going through hard times, which how many people are going through that right now? Trying to mentor young people to control what they do, show up their best, and understand that that's what they can control is a very important thing. I don't know, you know, a lot of people listen to music when they're at the gym. I listen to philosophy and Bible verses because I'm a nerd like that. So, today we're going through some of the philosophy, and one of the terms that I learned about was memento mori, which means, remember you must die. And so, and the purpose of that, and why they spoke about that is to remind you that at the end, that's where we're all going to end up. And so, between now and then, you know, what do you do to make a difference in society? And I think about a lot of the issues that we hear about at the town halls that are really cultural things, from homelessness to suicide, to all the different things facing our nation. And I really think that all too often, and I'm not trying to give a cop out because certainly we have our places elected, to take care of the things that you've put under our control, but there's so much of the issues facing society that honestly, our society and culture needs to start grabbing a hold of. And so, I think it's timely. I didn't, you know, I didn't know how many people would show up for the park tonight. But hearing how somebody like this teacher impacted so many young people is exactly what I'm speaking about. So, I am very pleased that this is coming forward. I remember the mayor and I were at a craft fair, and I was helping her with her table, and a young lady who, I say young, she's the same age as me. I went to school with her at Stanley Lake, came up and approached me about this park naming. That's the first time I heard about this. And then from there, she must have had the gentleman who emailed and asked about it, and we gave it to staff because that's what's appropriate. But I have to say, I tend to not be one who cries, but you guys have us working hard not to do that tonight. So, that being said, you know, I am honored to have so many people here who obviously lived that and tried to show people what they could control and show up, that virtue of how you show up and how it makes an impact on other people. So, I appreciate you all coming and sharing your stories tonight.
Council Senior?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to thank those that show up today. Some of them I know well, and their words were incredible. Also, the indelible mark that Mr. T made on the first speakers of how an impact in third grade can be incredibly lasting. So, take that with you forever. The second thing is, is my apologies to the public. I was not at the town hall. Family adventure that we planned over a year ago kind of got in the way of that, so family first. But I have had the opportunity to go back and listen to it a couple times. And I think, as Mayor Pro Tem said, we have to take those actions that are within our control, and we have to help try to explain those in a meaningful way to those who elected us to do that. And so, hopefully, we can continue to do that. We at times wish we had a magic wand to fix problems, but I'm glad we don't because that power itself is indelible and should not be given to any one person or body. And so, as we move through the troubles and the issues of our day, I hope you work alongside with us, walk alongside with us. We're going to have a discussion here tonight later on about some things that we can have control of locally and those things that our residents have been talking to us a great deal about. The theft of catalytic converters, the theft of cars, restitution to those people who have had losses, and to take those people who endanger others off the street, take the vehicles that they use to endanger other people, other people's lives, and disrupt the peace and tranquility that Westminster residents have come to expect. So, I look forward to that discussion later on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Hall, it was great. As the person that runs that, I have to make split-second decisions. And with it being only 55 folks that had agendas and things on their heart they needed to speak, I decided to give them the microphone and let them speak. Normally, we don't have that back-and-forthness because when we have a packed room, it gets pretty hard. But with this crew, we did, and we heard loud and clear. Some of the issues need to come through the budget process to get on that list for us to discuss during budget because there are going to be budget concerns. I talked with City Manager Freitag, and especially, there was one gentleman whose business is really being impacted by homeless. And staff's going to reach out to him, make sure he understands the way that we handle the compassionate care, the things that happen. Of course, if people come onto his property, he has different things he can do versus them being behind his fence. So, we did hear, I know that there will be action and be follow-up from city managers. So, it wasn't just words being said, and they're gone. I certainly wrestled all weekend with what we need to do. Obviously, not everybody knows our process for the homeless and how we approach, and more communication, 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 communication. Every way we can do it needs to happen because people still don't understand how it's working. So, and to you, Mr. T folks, and Parker, you broke my heart. And alls I can say is, you each have a story. You have how he taught you, what he did for you, what he brought out in you. So, when you're in that park, I hope his legacy lives on through you sharing it with people that are there that didn't ever know him, because that's how he'll stay alive. So, thank you for being here. Thanks for helping me with the pledge, those of you that were brave and came forward. Thanks for helping me with the pledge, those of you that were brave and came forward. And with that, oh, sorry.
I was getting in the queue.
Oh, okay. With that, I would ask that we do our first item of business as Item 10D. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the renaming of Trendwood Park to T. Buckhurst Park. We're all going to butcher that name.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass renaming of Trendwood Park to T. Buckhurst Park for Mr. Joe T., I'm just going to call him Mr. T., former teacher at Betty Adams Elementary School. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella?
I guess I saved my comments for the, well, I was saving it for this point. You know, I really appreciate hearing everyone's stories and memories. And, you know, when we think about what impact do we have in our lives and, you know, when we die, we're gone. But those little things that we do, those little bits of ripples of thought and action and way of thinking or acting, those live on. And I think that's the only way we really do live on. And then that ripples into how, you know, maybe his students or his, you know, his parents or his family continues to think and carry on what he's given to everybody. And I feel like Mr. T. has not only given ripples, he's given waves and that will continue throughout this community. And the park, he's put so much energy into that park, he's there. And so we better name it. It's just, it's very fitting. So thank you so much for letting us be able to share him forever.
Thank you. Like Counselor Nermella, I was saving my comments for the actual vote. But I just wanted to thank all who have come out and shared your thoughts and feelings about Mr. T. And I feel like, in a way, I feel like I never met him, but I feel like I know him just through your stories and what you've shared tonight. And thank God, there's a box of tissues right here because I needed it. So thank you for, for sharing your sincere and heartfelt memories of Mr. T. And I'm so honored to be able to vote on this tonight and will be a yes, obviously. But I'm just very, like the mayor had mentioned, I think that where it starts is with you all and carrying on his memories and carrying on his stories of how he's affected you. Because just, just within this meeting, like I mentioned, I feel like I have a little piece of him because I know just how he, what he meant to you and, and what he meant to this community. So thank you for sharing and I look forward to getting to vote on this.
Real call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
I don't want to see those frowny faces. I want to see smiles. And you may leave because we may have a longer meeting, but it's, it's okay to go. Thank you.
While they're doing that, I need to go get a drink or I'm not going to make it.
Counselors Bill 28, 29, 30, and 31. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 28 on first reading, amending Chapter 3 of Title 6 of the Westminster Municipal Code addressing the unauthorized use of motor vehicle, motor vehicle trespass, and unauthorized removal of motor vehicle parts.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 28. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
I will be voting against this. I have some problems with taking people's property before they have been found guilty in court of violating a law. And two, I find it un, unreally fortunate that we're passing a law to address eight estimated cases in the city.
Real call, please. Oh, sorry. Didn't see it.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I just wanted to clarify for the record. So Counselors' Bill 28 is offered for your consideration this evening. This would align the municipal code with charges that currently exist in state law. These are criminal charges in Ordinance 28, and they essentially address joyriding, which the state legislature has declared to be a misdemeanor offense. And joyriding is something that staff would recommend you consider as a local tool such that our police could charge that offense into the municipal court instead of going to the county courts. We hope that our cases resolve quicker in the municipal court relative to the county courts. And it also saves our witnesses and victims from driving up to Brighton or out to Golden. So, so Ordinance 28 really is intended to, to address these criminal offenses. And we have the authors present in the audience if you're curious to hear their perspective. But with regard to the first one, unauthorized use of a motor vehicle, that's the joyriding provision that the state legislature has now made into a misdemeanor so that we can regulate it locally if we choose to. Motor vehicle trespass is a more tailored charge for unauthorized entry into a vehicle. And removal of motor vehicle parts is designed to address the theft of motor vehicle parts like catalytic converters. And we hadn't had a specific charge locally. And the value of considering this tool for our police would be that if, even if a catalytic converter is worth more than $1,000, which almost all of them are, we still have an option to charge some locally. And that's what this charge would do. It's a criminal offense for unauthorized removal of motor vehicle parts, which would otherwise land, I think, in the county courts where I don't know that they would resolve as quickly or as potentially conveniently for our local, our residents who are victims or for the witnesses in the cases who are our employees, the police officers. So if there are any questions, you know, Mr. Hoff and Mr. Brostrom are here in the, in the audience. I'd also like to express some gratitude. We had technical review on these drafts from the court and Judge Lontine is present. And also from our police department, Chief Hobbert is present as well. So just to make sure the record's clear on Ordinance 28. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Just real quickly, I want to thank staff for this list of ones that we're about to go through. I know that this was that, from feedback from both the community and the council. And so I appreciate the work that's went into this. And I'm glad that we're to the point where we're actually going to be taking action on these things we've been talking about for a while.
Real call, please.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 29. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 29 on first reading, amending Chapter 22 of Title 1 of Westminster Municipal Code establishing procedures Westminster Municipal Court may use to impose and enforce restitution orders.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded past Counselors' Bill Number 29. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if it would be helpful to have a little background. This proposes a restitution ordinance, which we currently don't have in our code. The restitution ordinance would be intended to give the court a defensible statutory framework in which to order restitution for victims of crimes in Westminster. So I think that if you have questions, obviously Mr. Hoff, Mr. Brostrom, and the judge are here. But this one is a civil provision addressing restitution, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, yes, thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to thank staff for this. This is one more item where we are tonight bringing closer to the losses that our residents have dealt with and not having to go to the county or go to the state. Victims restitution is part of almost every case that I have seen. And so this allows our residents quicker restitution from their losses.
Real call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 30. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 30 on first reading, amending Chapter 1 of Title 10 of Westminster Municipal Code clarifying the Westminster Municipal Court jurisdiction to conduct a hearing regarding the probable cause for impounding or impoundment of a vehicle when the vehicle was impounded.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded past Counselors' Bill Number 30. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protem?
I don't, all my questions were answered in pre-meeting if folks are interested in this topic. I would just want to give a little bit of light. Well, one, in the pre-meeting, I asked if we could get a report on this in a year so that we can see how many times it's used, how it's used, how many times we dropped it, just so that we are keeping a look at this. And the reason that's important to me is we're talking about taking people's property. And I think that that's a, you know, it's important for the public to understand we don't take that authority lightly and that, you know, we want to make sure that it's being used properly. So, but I also want to point out the fact that this is certainly something that comes out of feedback from the community where otherwise there hasn't been this kind of tool in order for us to combat specifically street racing. I know that there actually has been loss of life in the city of Westminster due to street racing. So this is definitely directly related to a considerable amount of complaints that we as council members get about the dangers of street racing, the noise from street racing in general, the nuisance of it. So this certainly to me is, is responding to what we've heard from our constituents. But, you know, we'll continue to look at it and as we start to use this tool and see how it's working out. But I again want to thank staff for your work on this because I know this is a, these are challenged, challenging times and issues that we're tackling tonight.
Do you want, let's let Counselor Azadi go first.
Just want to say ditto. I agree with everything he said.
Okay. Mr. Frankel?
Thank you, Mayor. For, for, just for clarity, this proposed ordinance, Ordinance Number 30, addresses an existing section of the municipal code. It's already in place on impoundment of vehicles. The proposed amendments will update and clarify the provisions on impoundment. And it will make clear that the court only has jurisdiction to conduct hearings regarding probable cause for impoundment when a vehicle's been impounded by order of the Westminster Police within our city and stored at a facility designated by the city. So there's some, I, I think some, fair to say cleanup of the existing impoundment ordinance that we already have in place. And staff would recommend these changes to improve our code. Thank you.
Real call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 31. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 31 on first reading after chap, adding Chapter 3 of Title 8 of Westminster Municipal Code addressing abatement of nuisance vehicles used in dangerous activities on streets, highways, and private properties designed for motor vehicle travel.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 31. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella?
I was saving my comments for this one. I just wanted to thank staff for this. It's rather a creative approach to addressing what we've been hearing from the community. So I am also parroting what Mayor Protem said, but I do appreciate the, the thinking that went behind this and just helping us have another tool.
If I could, Mayor, also like to thank Mr. Hoff, Mr. Brostrom, the court, and the police for their input on this. I think it's fair to say this is, this is a tool that's offered for your consideration. It's a tool that other cities in the Front Range have also considered and adopted. So Denver, Aurora, North Glenn, Wheat Ridge, Greenwood Village are all, I think, trying to address street racing within their jurisdictions. And it's a, obviously, a growing problem. And we'd offer this proposed ordinance for your consideration tonight. And if you have questions, the authors are present in the room. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
I too would thank staff on this, bringing this tool to us because council did ask for this. Our residents asked for this. Our emails are full of concerns about speed expeditions, racing, just it creates a situation in our city of danger and the loss of, of that peaceful enjoyment that we, that we are also guaranteed to. I find this wholly different. This is someone's property, but this is someone's property who's being, it's being used illegally. We know for a fact that street racers switch vehicles just to get around this. And so then the car becomes, becomes the, you know, they're not going to be out there running the 100, 100-yard dash and their feet showing off. They're in a car that in many cases is modified so that they can get greater speed and then inflict more damage when they, when they do make a mistake, not, not win. And so our residents have been crying for a tool. This allows us to take this close to home and to help our residents for the thing that they've been asking for.
Not to belabor everything, but thank you all. I know it takes time. I hear the complications with the questions we asked in pre-meeting. So bless you for being the, the resources that we have because it is another tool in our toolbox and the community has been demanding it. So thank you.
Real call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella, can I ask you to repeat it to the microphone? I don't think that. Yes, thank you. The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
Thank you. That brings us to Resolution 16. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 16 permitting reimbursement from financing proceeds related to replacement of the municipal court facility.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 16. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
I will be, I will be voting no on this because I do not think the way that we're considering financing the new courthouse to be appropriate.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. On this specific one, because this came up in the town hall, and I think that there was in my view of this misperception of exactly, you know, what the next steps are. So maybe if we could just get some clarification from staff exactly what this does. Because I know there's a price tag on it, but I also know that, you know, that's kind of almost a placeholder because we're not through design. There's some different options that council said we wanted to have evaluated that caused some of that cost escalation. And so I just think since it was brought up, it would be important for the public to under, kind of understand some of those next steps.
Y'all ask Treasury Manager Bayerhoff to come forward and kind of give a quick overview.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yes, I'm happy to shed some light on the clarification on, on the reimbursement resolution, which is a common practice when we issue debt ahead of issuing debt. Now, there are several steps along that way before we actually issue the debt. But this allows us to have expenditures related to the project to be reimbursed by financing proceeds in the future. Specifically, what the reimbursement resolution allows us to do, it also gives us a little space. We have 36 months under this calendar. We can look back two months prior to the, the resolution passing to reimburse ourselves for hard costs. Now, those haven't occurred yet, but there are soft costs. So the soft costs, you can go back time and time, you know, as far as back as you want during the, during the, during the resolution period. Now, the hard costs, we have actually 36 months. So when we pass the resolution, we'll have 36 months if we have hard costs to reimburse ourselves for those expenses.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. And so with that being said, you know, the way I see this is we'll continue to go down that path as far as what the actual ultimate cost of this is going to be. But I also want folks to understand, this is a good moment for the city as far as I'm concerned. The municipal court being replaced is something that's been talked about since before I was on council. I think actually since the mayor was on council prior, it was being talked about because I remember sitting in meetings, hearing Judge Stippich talk about it. So in really, the reason it's important is the building that we're in currently is the oldest building that we have in our stock in the city. It was not purpose-built to be a court, and so it has some challenges when we look at providing good speedy justice to people who go through our court system as well as safely. So I am excited about this project, and I know that we're going to be keeping our eyes on it as far as what the cost ends up being, and there's going to, I'm assured, there's going to be some decision points along the way. But this, this gets us moving down that path, and so I appreciate all the work and effort that's went probably for the last decade into this project, getting to this point, but I'm excited for it.
Counselor Nermella.
This is for Mr. Baierhoff. Just for, since people are quite interested in this project, can you explain what you mean by soft costs and hard costs? Because I don't think that's typical.
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy to do so. Again, Bob Baierhoff, Treasury Manager. The soft costs are like your design, you know, studies that need to be done ahead of time. And so this is all prep work before you actually, you know, turn the dirt and start building something, so. And hard costs are cars, you know, hard costs, building the building.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protam Damott.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item 10C. Counselor Emmons.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for bond council services with Butler Snow LLP for a fee not to exceed $50,000 in connection with the anticipated issuance of tax-exempt certificates of participation, COPs, by the City of Westminster for the financing of a municipal court building.
Mayor Protam.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 10C. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker.
Yes, I'd like to have a really explanation of the COP funding mechanism.
Mr. Baierhoff, please come forward.
Yes, sir. Bob Baierhoff, Treasury Manager. Counselor Baker, specifically, can I have some questions related to the COPs, exactly what you're looking for?
Okay. A COP is a series of one-year leases?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What are we leasing?
Well, in this case, what we were projecting to do, much like what we did with the public safety building, is we're going to pledge that asset as if it was built, and that's how we get the, the funding to pay for the structure. In this case, it would be for the court. So the COPs is a financing structure, which, you're correct, it's subject to annual appropriation. So council, with the budget, will approve the expenditures for paying those COPs every year. Now, if that doesn't happen, you know, there's potentially grave implications. The credit market will not perceive that as a positive. So, you know, our good credit, which is double eight and higher depending on the entity and a little bit lower on, on the post-issues, but our good credit stands by our ability since 1997 to pay for COP expenditures.
Okay. And this is being used because it does not have to go to the voters like a, like a bond issue would do?
That is correct, that, that this is a structure, because it is subject to annual appropriation, it is a way to obtain financing, prudent financing, and being able to pay for that without going through the exercise of going to the public for a vote, yes.
Okay. And what would happen to the, to the lease if we declined to pay one of the annual installments?
Well, there's a lot of legal work that's involved there that you'll be voting on next. Our legal counsel, Dee Weiser and Kim Crawford from Butler Snow, that we would have obviously a hard conversation about that. You know, one of the provisions eventually what would happen if we didn't make payment would, we would forfeit that asset, in this case, the court.
You would forfeit it for one-year lease or forfeit it forever?
Well, depending on, on what happens through that process, you know, potentially, I would see if it was extreme, meaning like we didn't pay at all, the process would be that we would lose that courthouse. But there are provisions in the COPs as well as the legal structure for, let's say, a payment was missed for, for whatever reason, yet there is a tension to pay that payment. There'd probably be penalties, which I don't have that in front of me, what those exactly would be, because each deal is different. But there are, there are ways to avoid potentially having a default at the end of the day. We have not tested that, and I would not recommend it, but that's not for me to say at the end of the day.
Okay. Does, okay, the ownership of the underlying property transfer out of the city's ownership?
Well, yes, because, because what, what happens is like with other COPs, when we pledge an asset, there is a title restriction on it. And so as, as the asset is paid off, we in turn have that asset back. And like in this case, it'd be for just a court, we foresee that. But like other COPs, we pledge parks, we pledge fire stations and other assets that are part of the city. And as payments are made over the amortization period, those are released. So it, and another way to, to look at this is that that risk is taken away from the investors, the city gets that property back, and it's unencumbered.
That wasn't my question. My question was, does the fee simple ownership of the property change hands?
Well, in a, in a legal matter, yes, but we still have access to the property to its fullest extent, meaning the use of it.
Who becomes the owner of the property?
Well, you know, we have never tested that, but I would say that, that the holders of the certificates ultimately are the owners of that property.
Are they given a deed to the property? Like, I mean, do we basically transfer title to the property through a special warranty deed or a general warranty deed to some corporation that, that really issued all the certificates of participation?
Well, we, the, with the COP structure, we, there is a trust, which is a bank, which, which holds the trust documents and is charged with applying the, the covenants of that issue. So yes, we would be working through a bank in this case, and they in turn funnel the money to the investors. Now, you know, do we have a situation from the get-go where the deed is actually transferred over? No, because we have possession of that property, and we've made an obligation to make the payments on those COPs.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is I'm trying to understand it. And when a person buys a house, a single-family home, or a condo, or anything else, they will sign a note to a bank to pay, but they also sign a deed of trust to the public trustee of that county.
Mm-hmm.
And if they do not pay on the note, the holders of the note can go to the public trustee and say, "Exercise your deed to the property," correct?
That is correct.
And do we have a similar thing here?
That, that could happen in this situation as well, if, if, if it became to that level, yes.
So in other words, so in other words, there isn't a really conditional deed transferred to the public trustee, it's something that the bank and the certificate holders and all that would have to argue out in a court?
Yes, that would, that would happen.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
I will be voting against this. The only reason we're doing this is to get around Tabor. I mean, that's 100% clear to everyone, isn't it? And for me, Tabor is a promise we made to the people that they get to have a voice when we're doing a bond project. And this is a bond project? All these COPs are just window dressing on top of it. This is a bond project, clear and simple, and we're cutting out the voters, the taxpayers. And that was the whole point of Tabor, that they get to weigh in, that they get to have a voice in this matter. And I think it's disingenuous of us not to do it. Would it cost us some time? Yes. I remember on the time schedule that it might cost us maybe a couple months, because we weren't going to get until August, when we were going to get things done. And if we had to wait till November, then we couldn't do it until after November. But I think we have an obligation to the voters and to integrity and to Tabor. So I'll be voting against this.
Counselor Nermella.
Okay, let me try that again. I wanted to just comment on this mechanism, the use of the certificates of participation. I think there's a, a balance that we need to strike with respect to how we fund large projects and when we go to the community to ask for, you know, for permission to spend money. And there's a level of efficiency, there's a level of our need to be able to provide services and replace buildings when they need to be replaced. And I think this is a tool that allows us to do that within our means and to not have to go out and ask for, for example, additional taxes or additional ability to, you know, to run the city. And so I think there's, again, there's a time and a place to go to the community for large projects that might impact, you know, just the entire community, like a huge roadway improvement or huge sewer improvement or huge, you know, effort to go out and acquire more parks or to improve things beyond where they're at. But I think this is more of a core service, and so that's why I think it makes sense to utilize this funding tool, so.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that it's important to, to point out some of the projects that have been used for, with COPs. So our Justice Center has, was, COPs, I believe, there's been some bridges potentially that have been, this mechanism has been used. And the reason I bring that up is this isn't like a new mechanism that the city uses or any government entity in the state of Colorado. I know that there are differing opinions about this versus going to the voters and, you know, Tabor and stuff, but at the end of the day, this is a legal tool that the municipality is able to use, so that I don't see anything disingenuous about it. I think that the use case of, like Counselor Nermella was saying, for me, is this is a function of service being our Justice Center or our municipal court that people expect us to have, just like they expected us to have a police station. So as we grew and we needed a new police station, that mechanism was used in order to build that, the police station across the street from us. So to me, this is a proper use of the tool, and I have no problem using it. But I think it's, again, like I said, it's important to understand this isn't something that is out of the ordinary for us to use this tool.
Counselor Seymour.
I think one of the keys there, and no, I don't see this as a way around this, so that's a good debating tactic, but I won't accept it. The way I look at this, too, is, is another tool in our tool belt. This city has been more than happy to go to the voters, and the voters have given us the ability to have a post-tax, the public safety tax. The voters on the last election on the parks and open space also authorized $15 million on top of that because they felt, and felt the strong need to the continuation of Westminster as a great place to have parks and open spaces and libraries. So, you know, we have not been concerned about that at all. I don't, this is not an issue, shall your taxes be increased by this amount in order to fund this? This is a building that we're going to build, and we're going to use a tool to finance it. It's, it's similar to, we're not going to go to the voters every time we drop 1.5 million, $8 million on a new fire truck. So it's just a, another tool that we've done that, and I believe the bridge we built was 144th. And so we did get quite a return out of that as well, too. So I think it's just part of the process, and I think many of us will agree, the building is in dire, dire need. So that's my thoughts.
Worse than dire. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protam Damott.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item E, authorized task order number three. Counselor Emmons.
I move to authorize the city manager to approve Task Order Number Three with DTJ Design Incorporated in the amount of $310,660 for design services for the Downtown Center Park Project, bringing the project design fees from $249,500 to $560,160, plus an additional 10% contingency on Task Order Number Three in the amount of $31,066 for a total authorized expenditure of $591,226.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Task Order Number Three. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Damott.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 27. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 27 on second reading to approve an ordinance amending Title V of the Westminster Municipal Code by the addition of a new Chapter 24 concerning short-term rental licensing and amending Title XI, Chapter IV Westminster Municipal Code by the addition of a new Section 18 concerning short-term rentals as a land use.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 27. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker.
Yes, I will be voting again on this. I will be voting no again, as I did on first reading. We have lots of short-term rentals in the city. They're called hotels and motels. This sets up a thing, even though it's only minor at first. I don't think this was a good compromise between people's property rights for their houses and the overriding needs of the city and of the neighborhoods in which the houses are located. And I think we could have done a better job in making that compromise than this, so I will be voting no.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll be voting yes as I did, and the reasons that I did on first reading was, this is a tool for us to manage and license these because they already exist. So by us putting our head in the sand and saying, "No, we're going to ignore them," I think we're going to be in a worse position. We, we have an opportunity, as this evolves, to tweak this ordinance, which I, I look to getting feedback and data on this so that we can make any changes in the future in need be to protect our neighborhoods.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
No.
And Mayor Protam Damott.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That concludes the public portion of the City Council meeting. Mr. Frankel, do we have reason for executive session this evening?
We do, Mayor. There are two executive sessions that are proposed for City Council. The first is an executive session related to collective bargaining to discuss the terms of a tentative agreement pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C7.
Thank you. I will poll council if you're wanting to go into executive session for item A on the post-executive sessions regarding an executive session related to collective bargaining. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Nancy McNally, yes?
Yes.
Lindsey Emmons?
Red Seymour, yes?
And Bruce Baker, yes.
Number two?
Thank you, Mayor. The second executive session this evening would be to, for discussion of a personnel matter, the quarterly check-ins on annual review process specific to the city manager, city attorney, and presiding judge pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
Again, roll call if you're willing to go into executive session. Just state your name and say yes.
Obie Zadies?
Sarah Nermella, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes?
Lindsey Emmons, yes.
Red Seymour, yes?
And Bruce Baker, yes.
It is 8:40 and we will head into executive session.
After a short break.
After a short break.